Good evening. It's September 16th, 2025, and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. It is just a little past 6:30, and we're going to go ahead and get started. If you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation by Mike Gunnerson of City Ministry Network. Thank you.
Gracious God, we come before you today grateful for the gift of this community we share. We ask your blessing upon our county that it would be a place of justice, opportunity, and peace for all who call it home. We pray for these elected leaders, that you would grant them wisdom, humility, and courage to make decisions that serve the common good. And we ask your guidance over this meeting tonight, that the conversations and the actions here would be marked by clarity, respect, and integrity. In your name we pray. Amen.
So every year, September 15th to October 15th, Stanislaus County celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month by appreciating the community's history, heritage, and contributions of our ancestors, of American citizens who came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South and Central America. This year, the 2025 observance theme is Collective Heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. This theme highlights the importance of recognizing the history, journeys, and achievements of Hispanic and Latino communities, and their ongoing impact and role in shaping the future. Hispanic people have been a part of our country from the very beginning, and continue to fuel our economy and enrich our culture as teachers, as business owners, scientists, soldiers, farmworkers, first responders, artists, public servants, athletes, and much more. Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to shine a spotlight on the unique voices and experiences of Hispanic Latino Americans, and recognize their history, journeys, achievements through these celebrations. And each one of us in our supervisory districts have picked families or individuals to recognize. And going first will be Supervisor Withrow.
All right. Thank you. Good to see everybody here. Jose, come on up here. So the individual that I chose is a very good friend of mine, Jose Zabala. And when I think of Jose, I was talking to my wife about this the other day. Jose and I go to lunch every now and then, and I walk away thinking, I just want to get that happiness that Jose has. I want to get that, it's kind of a faith-filled happiness, and I want to get to that spot. And that's what Jose has. He's very much a man of God, and very much an individual who does for others, but gets no attention for it. Doesn't get any praise, any accolades. And really, it's his faith in God that is the reason that Jose does these things. I know that, and I know that very well. Abraham Lincoln one time said, somebody asked him if you were praying that God was on your side, and Abraham Lincoln said, "I'm praying that I'm on God's side." And when I look at Jose, I think that Jose is on God's side. Jose is out there in the community, doing things for this community for which he benefits not at all. And I hope you're going to talk about some of those things tonight. The journeyman, for example, is one that just amazes me. So just, Jose is everything I want to be when I grow up. And I very much respect you for what you do for this community, and I'm so happy to have you here tonight to receive this recognition. And I want you to talk and not listen to me talk. All right, here you go. You're up, buddy.
All right. Well, of course, my phone, there it is. Well, first off, Terry, thank you so much, and Board Supervisors, friends, I mean, you guys are all doing amazing work in our community, so I appreciate you all. And the community that's here, thank you for showing up. I know this is an important process for the people in Purple, and so thank you for being here. This is what it's for, right? It's an honor to stand here before you today, not just to receive this proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, but this recognition is not just for me, it's for the countless, I'm going to try not to cry, Hispanic families in Stanislaus County who have worked tirelessly, often unseen, to build a better future for their children. And some of them are here in this room today. This is a month of celebration of culture, resilience, contribution, while also reminding us of the ongoing challenges in our community. As we celebrate this month, let us also commit to action together, united under one God, under one voice, to work, to build bridges, and to lay down barriers. Let us continue to amplify the voices of those who are in the shadows. Let us continue to be a light upon a hill here in Stanislaus County. I dedicate this moment to my late father and my grandmother, who recently just passed. My father was a magistrate who taught me true honor. True honor comes from service unto the Lord, and putting family first. And my grandmother, a woman of resilience who labored in the fields in Tri-Valley Cannery here in Stanislaus County to help provide for her family. Their legacy is a sacrifice also of strength, faith, and love that lives in me and my family, and I'm proud to carry that forward. Thank you, Stanislaus County, for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. We appreciate you all. God bless you all.
Tonight, here in District 1, I'm going to invite the Tina Harrow family all up. George, Anna, Elena, Carlos, come on up. So today, we gather to honor the remarkable story of El Ranchito and the Tina Harrow family, a narrative shaped by faith and sacrifice guided by perseverance and defined by family. Jose Tina Harrow was born in Fannin County, Texas, after his parents sought refuge from the Mexican Revolution of 1910 and 1920. Although his family eventually returned to Mexico, Jose decided in 1953 to come to California's Central Valley, driven by a dream of a better life. He diligently worked the fields by day and the cannery and escalon by night. Soon after, he was joined by his wife, Elena. She took on various jobs, but her true passion always lay in the kitchen, a passion she continues today, or to live out today. You can still find her in the kitchen at El Ranchito Restaurant in Riverbank, cooking alongside her children, Anna, Ruth, Carlos, and George. With encouragement from close friends and Elena's persistence, Jose finally agreed to open El Ranchito in 1967. In those early years, the restaurant found support from farmworkers and cannery employees who discovered not just food, but a true sense of home. The entire Tina Harrow family worked side by side, and through their sacrifice and dedication, the business flourished. In the decades that followed, Jose and Elena's children took over the restaurant, carrying forward the family's dedication and commitment. In 1992, the restaurant expanded into a new building, and since then, El Ranchito has built a loyal following and lifelong friendships within the community. Today, El Ranchito has proudly served this community for almost 60 years. It has welcomed seven generations of families, and seen four generations of the Tina Harrow family dedicate themselves to the business. El Ranchito is more than just a restaurant, it is a living story of resilience, faith, and family. For narrowly six decades, it has stood as a place where community, tradition, and friendship converge. On behalf of the Tina Harrow family, they say thank you for being a part of this incredible journey. And if you stop by El Ranchito on any given night, there is a good chance you'll see one or two of your county supervisors there, enjoying the food and the vibrant community the Tina Harrow family has built. And we appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Who wants to be the family spokesperson? George, is that you?
Thank you for having us here. You know, not much for words, but I wanted to, on behalf of my whole family, my entire family, my working staff, we have a few generations of employees that have had their children work for us. And I wanted to express the utmost gratitude and appreciation that the community, the Riverbank community, and all the surrounding communities have made it possible for us to be able to be successful and have so many people that have supported us through the years. As Mr. Condit had stated, we've been in business for 58 years. We're close to retirement, but at the end, you know, we've had some tragedies and whatnot. And I think we have all realized that we're not quite there yet. So we really appreciate your guys' support, your generosity, and every single person that has walked through that door is like family to us. Thank you so much.
So I've been a little under the weather, but I feel fine. So I'm going to take this off for this moment, and I'll stand back. So you wouldn't believe that Carlos and George and I, we played basketball at the SOS Club probably for 30 years together. We don't look like it, I know, but you can tell by the way we walk, kind of stiff-kneed. So it's always nice to run into them, and that's why we drink your margaritas, right? Come on up, Jose. So today, I want to talk about Jose Aldalco. And I'm not sure, some of you are probably familiar with him, but I'm very familiar with him. Is anyone old enough to remember E.F. Hutton commercials? When E.F. Hutton talks, people listen. That's kind of like your North Star. This man here, when he was in elected office, he was one of my North Stars, someone I had to pay attention to. When he was speaking at a meeting, I had to pay attention to what he was saying, because he always had something positive, inspirational, very inspirational speaker, never criticized if he had an issue. It was just normal conversation about how we can do better together. So I've always remembered that you were very much an inspiration early on in my years on the Board of Supervisors. So Jose has spent more than 25 years in the Waterford City family. He started out as a teacher, and he's worked his way up to superintendent of schools for the Waterford School District. But that's not how I knew him. I knew him through elected office. He was appointed in 2007 to the Waterford City Council. He ran a couple of terms, and then he ran for mayor in 2020, ran unopposed. And then he had this great opportunity as the superintendent of schools, and he decided that that was more important than being the mayor of the town. And it was a big loss, again, for myself personally, but I'm so proud of what you've done. You think about the people he's interacting with now, or what he's done over the years in his 25 years of service, from the youngest people in the city of Waterford to the oldest, right, when he was on the city council or as mayor. And he's made a difference in his community, and continues to make a difference in his community. He's one of the most outstanding people I know. And it was pretty funny, when we were asked to, you know, who we would like to honor, it was really easy for me to come up with my person. So again, just because of your commitment, your servant's heart, your North Star, that's why I'm here with you today. I so appreciate what you continue to do to make your community bigger, lift them up. And your inspiration doesn't stop with just the kids. It's affecting people who are a lot older than you two, brother. So again, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I always carry these things around, we have this nice certificate, and I'm going to hand the mic to you.
Talk about putting someone on the spot, right? Yes, I have been here since 1988 in the United States, and I came to the United States when I was 14 years old. I didn't speak one word of English, and I came to San Jose, California, where I grew up. We traveled to school for an hour and a half. We lived downtown San Jose all the way to Blossom Hill, John Middle School. And one of the things that I always stuck to my head was that when I arrived here, school was not easy with other language, but it was because everything was provided to me. And that's what I tell students every day, and every time I have an opportunity, is that we have the potential to be what you want to be, regardless of what color, what race, what religion, or whoever you are. We have the ability to become who we really want. And celebrating Hispanic Month is very proud to me, but it's not about me, it's about the children who are ahead or behind me. They have the opportunity to become whoever they want. And through my service, I have met many of these men here behind me in different offices, and working together, I think, is the best solution that we have for our country. Thank you.
Now you see why he's an inspirational type of guy. It's everything, the glass is always half-full. I love it.
There's some hands standing up. No, no. It is such a privilege to celebrate Hispanic Month with all of you. And everybody that's in the audience today, thank you for making the time. I have the distinct honor and privilege of having my person in my district that I feel that is the spirit of what it is to be a good community leader. And that gentleman is Adolfo Martinez. Come on up, Adolfo. Come on up. All right. So I got some notes, but then I'm going to speak from the heart, because I got a lot of good things to say about you. You can pay me later. But Adolfo runs an organization in the airport neighborhood, a neighborhood in our community that has many people that rely on good neighborhood heroes such as Adolfo. He runs an organization called Casa Cultural, a nonprofit cultural arts community center. Their mission is to provide a safe and positive environment for youth and young adults to teach and promote the traditional folklore of their community. They support and promote the growth of their members to create leaders who will provide positive results in improving the quality in their lives and their communities. Casa Cultural is an integral part of the airport neighborhood, so every year, I get the privilege and honor of going to their holiday parade. And when you go to that holiday parade in that neighborhood, you see those children, that is the highlight for some families, to participate in the holiday season and in the parade. And that would not be possible without this gentleman. He does everything. He does a toy drive, collects toys, he dresses up as Santa Claus, and plays the part really well. And the community really appreciates it, and it just gives everybody that's there that day a sense of family, neighborhood, camaraderie. And that's why I say Adolfo is the glue that gels that entire neighborhood. When I got elected to this office, one of the first people I reached out to was to Adolfo in the airport neighborhood. And we met, and he is a true advocate for his neighborhood. When I met him the first time, he goes, "Manning, nobody comes here. We feel like we're the forgotten people of this community. Nobody comes and talks about our crime issues. Nobody comes and talks about all the different, you know, garbage, graffiti, and different things in our community." And I just let him lead, and I just followed him. Every time I would say, "Who should we bring to our next meeting?" "Manning, we got to bring the sheriff out here. We got to bring the police chief out here. We got to bring somebody here that will listen." And that would not be possible without this gentleman's dedication. So for me, he's my unsung hero in District 4, and such a privilege to have people like this in our neighborhoods. And so for Hispanic Heritage Month, I think this gentleman embodies what it is to be a true community leader in every aspect of that word, and I'm so grateful for that. So thank you so much. It's an honor and privilege to recognize you. I know this recognition is just a small part of everything you do on a daily basis. So thank you so much.
No, I'd say thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, everybody over there in the back. And this man is doing a lot for the community over there in Araport. The people know Araport need a lot of help. And it's one of the students dancing when they're little, and now look. I there more than 25 years, and working in the community more than 30 years in the community. And I still there. And I say, when they calling La Modesto, I say, "No, La Modesto the whole year, not only one day." And I say, "Cleaning, I cleaning every day." Thank you. And that's it. He say everything.
And next, I have the distinct honor of representing Mr. Pedro Marquez of District 5. And if you and the Marquez family would like to join us up here, you're more than welcome to come on up. You guys are welcome if you want. That's okay. But if you know anything about Ceres or South Modesto, you know about the Marquez family. There's no doubt about it. El Ramatito Flea Market is a pillar and staple in our community, and is the main artery to the highest sales tax-producing corridor in Stanislaus County, which is Crozany Road Corridor. And the Marquez family consistently goes out of their way to give. They're very philanthropic. And one of the events that always touches my heart each and every year is the Christmas Posada in partnership with South Modesto's Business United. There are so many families, countless children, thousands of children, that receive a Christmas gift due to the giving of the Marquez family and because of South Modesto Business United, who would probably go without those gifts, without their generosity. The Marquez family is a family about family first, and they're also a family about giving and a family about community. And they constantly answer the call of giving back to the community. So it is an honor and a distinction to recognize you here tonight. Thank you so much for your years of contribution to Stanislaus County, and you are more than appreciated.
Thanks for this recognition. I'm going to try to speak a little bit of English, because my English is not that good, but I can do it better in Spanish, so I can say in Spanish. I hope you guys understand what I'm saying.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so it is fair for every speaker, keep comments to the five-minute time limit. And the first card up is Christina Rodriguez. All right, next up is Carmen Villa.
Hello, my name is Carmen Villa. I've been a social worker with Stanislaus County Child Protective Services for eight years, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 521. I'm here to comment on our working conditions that make it hard to retain experienced staff. We manage complex cases with heavy workloads, and too often, the stress leads to burnout, medical leave, or sometimes high turnover. These complaints we hear in our lobbies or over the phone are the same findings in the county's recent health report you will soon review. Long wait times, poor case management, and ultimately, poor outcomes for our families. This isn't because we don't care. It's because we don't have enough staff or the resources to do the job that the families deserve and our county needs. This board must find the leadership to get us to a point where we are fully staffed and that will tell struggling families that the status quo is no longer acceptable. We need more trained eyes and experienced, hands-on veterans to manage difficult cases so families can get the help they need to find stability. And then wages, and when wages are fair, we can keep the dedicated public service experts who know how to keep children safe and families united. I have faith that this board can take care of frontline staff and in turn will end up partnering together to take better care of families in crisis. That's what our community deserves, and that's what we're asking for today. I stand with my union to demand this board deliver a fair contract that prevents staff burnout and attracts public service experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Next up is Brent Jarvis.
Good afternoon to the board. My name is Brent Jarvis. I don't have a formal speech for you guys, but I am a client of the services provided by these individuals that are in this courtroom fighting for a fair contract today. And to give you kind of an insight of what they do for this community and what they do for people in social service needs, I'm a member, I'm a client of the Adult Drug Core Program. I'm on Phase Three of Four. Eight months ago and prior, thank you. Eight months ago and prior through my entire twenties and thirties, I was an incarcerated individual because I was an addict. And today, I can proudly say because of the work provided by these individuals that are in this room today, I'm now a full-time student in sociology. Thank you. I'm also a business owner out of Trulock, California. I'm a SVGNA area representative for Narcotics Anonymous. And these are all things that would not have been possible if it wasn't for the work that these individuals provide for my services. They have had such a dramatic impact on my ability to be a positive provider to this community that I will forever be grateful, and I know there are many more that rely on their work. So the fact that we have to stand here and fight for their rights and for their fair wages is kind of mind-boggling to me, to be honest, because if it wasn't for the work they provided, I wouldn't be where I'm at in life today. I'm very passionate about this. I'm very passionate about the work that they provide to us, because I see the direct impact they have on this community firsthand. And I see the effects of the immense caseload also, because I'm involved in the classes. I see firsthand how overloaded they are. And these numbers are staggering. We're talking one professional for every 492 that they provide work to, that they provide their services to. That's a staggering number. And so the fact that we have to stand here and fight for their fair wages is mind-boggling to me. I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Brent. Next up is Manny. Manny?
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Manny. Thank you for your guys' time this evening. I've been in mental health for 10 years now, the last four with Stanislaus County. I've worked the access line, I've worked the Community Corrections Program, and my home program at Trulock Behavioral Health. A lot of people behind me, we understood what we signed up for. We understood that being in mental health means we're bottom of the barrel, we're not hot-shot doctors or anything like that. We knew that our job would be rewarding in other ways. We knew that it meant treating the community meant putting our own biases aside, putting our own beliefs aside to treat our clients. We knew that regardless of where someone came from, or how they were raised, or who their parents are, or what they did, or how their life turned out, our job was to treat them in good faith. And we all understand that, right? And we do that every day, right?
Manny, Manny, make sure your comments are towards the dais, okay?
Sorry. I just want to say that I'm very proud of the people behind me. We do our job every single day with no bias, with no disregard to who's coming through our door. We provide a service. As a frontline worker, I'm here to represent so many of my colleagues who are struggling every day managing our caseloads, managing our deadlines, and more importantly, managing our own mental health. It's on the line, okay? I see them missing breaks, missing lunches, dropping everything to go help a client in crisis, helping somebody from committing suicide, preventing literal death, literal numbers that are raising in our community. We're doing that every single day. We don't clock out at 5:00. We don't have, we know that some of us is giving up Christmas and breaks and lunches and holidays. We know that someone's gonna be there to respond to our community. That's what we do. Many of our programs are a full-service program, which means somebody is on the clock 24/7. That means someone is missing time with their family, someone is missing time for their own mental health to be a service to the community. And that says a huge thing, because this is, it's definitely helped our law enforcement decrease the number of 5150s they're doing, because a client can call and talk to somebody, and that saved someone from having to go to the hospital, from having to get put on a 5150 hold. And that's something that my colleagues and I do every single day. Someone is available for our community every single day. You guys know how much mental health services have impacted our community. You're aware of the population we serve. You are aware that we serve the most high-risk, the most severe, and the most one in need. We are the ones who are in the trenches. We are the ones who are in the most unfathomable living environments, trying to just provide a decent service to the members that need it the most. On behalf of my colleagues who work tirelessly, I'm here to ask for fair pay, lower caseloads, and fair staffing. I'm here for you to listen to our pleas, for you guys to provide us the support we need so we can do our jobs better. It's our job to treat the community, and we're doing that every single day, but it's your job to help us, and for you guys to bargain in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Next up is Amanda Barnett.
Hello. My name is Amanda Barnett. Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. I know we're a little rowdy, but I am a behavioral health specialist, and I worked for Stanislaus County for almost 10 years. I'm here tonight to advocate for fair working conditions, smaller caseloads, and a livable wage. I started at the county 10 years ago, and when I started here, you know, I was 25 and excited to be working at such a large corporation and to be providing services to the most vulnerable. And the work was difficult, but it was fair, in my opinion. We had appropriate caseloads, and I felt like I had the help that I needed, and I don't feel that way anymore. I work, the quality of services that I'm able to provide then is far superior to the ones that I feel like I can provide to the clients now. I work at Community Corrections Partnership, which is supposed to be a full-service partnership for act-level clients, which is the most severely mentally ill. The state mandates that full-service partnerships, act-model program caseloads are 12 to 15, and I have over 40. I have to provide three times as many people services that is appropriate to provide quality care. And there's a reason why there's a lot of people who work for the county who have worked here for less than five years, because we cannot keep staff, because the quality of services or the quality of our working conditions is very, very difficult, and the wages that we receive is just unfair, especially for the cost of living. We have lower pay, higher caseloads, and potential threats to our life. Why would people want to stay? And we have, the turnover in our programs is very high. The level of stress we all experience due to the expectations of keeping documentation deadlines, meeting with all of our clients two to three times a week, and working on-call, sometimes going out 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and then expecting to come into work the next day, you know, able to continue to serve, all while receiving less pay, lower pay than our surrounding counties. I was shocked, honestly, when I was told, when I learned that the on-call pay is $4 an hour, and it's been $4 an hour for over 20 years, which is absurd, in my opinion, because the cost of living has gone up, the price of a dollar has gone up, or whatever the difference is, you know what I mean? It just doesn't, it's not worth the same as it was 20 years ago, but yet, that's still what we receive. And so with the cost of living being what it is, how can we be expected to stay? Please help us to decrease caseloads and increase pay to retain staff and assist us with being able to provide quality services for the most vulnerable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is Shan Twonique Anderson. Did I get your name right?
No, it's Shan Twonique Anderson.
Shan Twonique, thank you.
My name is Shan Twonique Anderson. Most people know me by CeCe. I am a registered AOD counselor, and I've been with the county for about a year and a half now, going on two pretty soon, and I'm a member of the SEIU Union. But today, I'm here to talk about not only the wage issue, but the safety issue of being understaffed and the burnout that we face. I, as a single mom of two, have had to take out two loans in a month for groceries. And I can't afford to get them to school to have their dreams come true. And I'm always tired, I'm burnt out. I've witnessed my coworkers be abused and hurt by clients, because there's not enough people to be around to know when they're having a crisis. And then we come home, and we have to do it all over again. We worked long hours, we're expected to do a lot of paperwork for each client, and our clientele is, they're all over the place. There's mental health issues, there's drug abuse and substance use, and we're tired. And the turnaround for our coworkers is so high. People leave every month, new come in, it takes them over a month to even get on the floor to be able to help. And yet, when they get there, they leave right away, because it's so stressful. And I just want you guys to be able to give us a fair wage, a livable wage. I love my county, and I love doing what I do, but I can't keep working if I can't afford to eat. So I would like to have a fair contract this time around and lower our caseloads and staff better. If there's gonna be a staffing issue, I'd rather it be too many than not enough.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hello, board. Hi. So my name is Carlo Vasquez. I use he-and-they pronouns, and I'm a health education specialist with Stanislaus County Health Services Agency. I'm also, of course, a SEIU local 521 member. So a few weeks ago, on Labor Day, I sent each and every single one of you an email asking you to keep SEIU in mind as you enjoyed your day off. I wanted to take a moment to go ahead and reiterate some of the points that I made and see if I could elaborate on those a little bit as well. Also, I only received one response for that, so I'm hoping this could also serve as a chance for those of you who might have missed it the first time to re-encounter some of that information. So in that email, I mentioned that I didn't want to spend too much time explaining what it was that we did, because I firmly believe, I have so many of my colleagues doing that already here today, and I also firmly believe that you already know.
Yeah.
But Condit, Supervisor Condit, you mentioned on July 25th, you spent the first third of your State of the County address highlighting the work of county workers.
Right?
CEO Hayes. Thank you. CEO Hayes, you mentioned- CEO Hayes, you mentioned in the August edition of Standworthy, our employee newsletter, you said, and I quote, "At the heart of our progress is you, our dedicated workforce. Whether you're on the front lines of public safety, behind the scenes keeping operations running, or providing services that change lives, you are the engine of this county. You are the reason the theme of this year, 'Strong and Resilient,' rings true." So it could not be more clear to me that you know what we do and how important it is and how well we do it, even with the lack of resources that we have. Later on in that email, I started discussing that ultimately, I think that we, meaning us as workers and you as a board, kind of want the same things. Right? And I talked about a few reasons why I believed that. And I talked about a few different reasons why I had some doubts. First, Supervisor Gruehl, you commented on the successful AfSME contract negotiation in the August 5th meeting. You said, "We are working with other groups to hopefully also accomplish that in a timely manner." And I know that we share this goal because SEIU started our negotiations with you in February. Of course, right? We know what happened next. We had to wait multiple months to hear a response from you. And then now here we are in September. We still don't have a contract. Supervisor Withrow, in that same meeting, as you voted to give yourselves and other unrepresented workers an 11% increase over three years, you commented. You said, "This job shouldn't be only for people who have other day jobs. It shouldn't be prohibitive for individuals to do this job if they want to full-time." And the way that could become prohibitive is if it does not pay enough. Of course, you were talking about your position as a supervisor, but I really do believe that that can apply to any position. People deserve a fair and livable wage that they can use to support themselves and their family. I want to make it really clear here that my stance in this moment isn't necessarily that you all and the other unrepresented workers didn't deserve that increase. My stance here is that we all deserve an increase. And yet, the offers that have been presented to us have now put a number-based value on how much less you value us when compared to our colleagues. Our most recent offer of 6.75% over three years is about half of what we were asking for, 15.75% over three years. Excuse me, 15% over three years. But I think more pointedly is about 3/5ths of the value that you've given our AfSME colleagues and yourselves. I don't think I need to reiterate the optics of something that could be seen as a 3/5ths compromise. Hopefully, all of us know our American history. I'll leave you here. Oh, out of time. Can I finish?
You just need to finish up your thought.
Yeah, so I'll leave you here with just a question, right? I know you can't answer it because I'm out of time, and also, this isn't a Q&amp;A. But I want all of you to consider it, all of you here in the room to consider it, all of you watching at home to consider this. If you know what we do, how important it is, and how well we do it, and if we want the same things, then why has it been so difficult for us to achieve it? We're on the same team.
Thank you, Carlo.
Let's act like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jody Smith. Jody Smith.
Hello, board. I'm Jody Smith. I'm a behavioral health specialist. I've been working with the county for nine years, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 521. I want to express deep concern about the proposed 2% wage increase. While any raise is appreciated, the reality is that 2% is not enough to meet the cost of living in California today. Inflation continues to drive up the cost of housing, groceries, utilities, and basic needs, leaving many of us living paycheck to paycheck, despite working in a profession that serves the community at its most vulnerable points. This situation is not sustainable. Our work demands compassion, resilience, and long hours, yet many of us are struggling to make ends meet. A wage adjustment that truly reflects the economic realities we face is necessary if the county wants to retain experienced, dedicated, social workers, community workers, BHSs, CSTs, and avoid any further staff turnover. Also, highlight the importance of remote work. Working from home has proven to increase productivity and reduce burnout. It allows us to complete documentation efficiently and remain more focused for client needs. A recent Stanford study found that employees working remotely are more productive and have high job satisfaction. Remote work also makes a difference in our daily lives and our wallets. Many not only saves significant gas money, but also reduces wear tear on the vehicles, cuts down on the long stressful drives. These savings matter, especially when our paychecks are already stretched thin. For county, remote work also reduces costs tied to office space, utilities, and other overhead. In short, a 2% raise falls short of the reality of inflation and does not provide a livable wage. Preserving remote work helps both employees and the county, providing financial relief, better productivity, and stronger morale. We employees are the faces in the community, working within this community to keep people and families of this community healthy, safe, and thriving. It's time for bold solutions. I stand with my union to demand that this board deliver a fair contract that prevents burnout and attracts public service experts. That's the only way our Stanislaus community can truly thrive and feel safe. When you support a fair contract, it lets us know that we are seen, we are heard, and we are valued employees.
Thank you, Jody. Next up is Rosalva Moreno.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rosalva Moreno, and I have been a Child Protective Services social worker for the past decade, the last two here at Stanislaus County. It's disheartening that we find ourselves here today, not simply asking, but pleading for acknowledgement of our value, our contributions, and the challenges we face. Since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the cost of living in Stanislaus County has risen to more than 49%. Yet, many of us continue to work tirelessly without a corresponding increase in compensation. As you sit in your seats as stewards of this county, I want to gently remind you that we are not separate from you. We are a reflection of your leadership and values. The work we do every day is a foundation of the accomplishments you proudly share on behalf of Stanislaus County. We are not adversaries. We are partners. We are family. And today, your family is asking you to see us, to hear us, and to stand with us in ensuring fair and equitable wages. How does it feel to know that your own team, your county family, is struggling paycheck to paycheck, often under the weight of anxiety and stress brought on by financial insecurity? This struggle is not just a personal one. It's a systemic issue. Exhaustion from being overworked and underpaid directly impacts turnover, recruitment, morale, and the ability to deliver critical services to the community we all serve. We also want to highlight the effectiveness of remote work. Many of us have been more productive working from home, supported by research showing increased output, better focus, and improved morale in flexible work environments. It reduces absenteeism, supports health, and allows us to maintain service levels without the added cost of office space or the risk of illness. We are not asking for luxury. We are asking for recognition. We are asking for sustainability. We're asking for what is fair. Please consider not just the data, but the people behind it, the faces, the families, the commitment as your family we bring every day to serve this county with integrity. Thank you for your time and for listening with open arms.
Thank you, Rosalva. Next up is Hortensia Flores.
Hi, board. My name is Hortensia Flores, and I want to say I'm 100% Mexican, and I'm so proud of it, especially because today you guys gave an award to the family. So I'm passionate for that. My parents came, brought me to this country, and I am passionate for my community. I want to help everyone if I could. But we want to stay transparent as well, and I ask for the same from you guys. I do know that there is also program directors here, so I hope they're hearing our comments as well. I've been for the county for 17 years through different programs. We are the foundation of this community, dedicated to caring for our most vulnerable citizens, advocating for justice, and ensuring that vital public services continue to operate effectively and efficiently. We are on the front lines during disasters, crises, during home visits, family crises. During the pandemic, we were the front lines. We were out every day assisting our community in any way we could, delivering food, providing testing, providing support. Today, I invite each one of you to join us and see firsthand the vital services we provide during our community visits. I would be happy to take each one of you guys and have you shadow me when what happens during each visit. I'll be happy to trade your paycheck for mine at any time, please. Definitely, I want you to be in support with us. Sometimes, we got to see our community and see where people are at, workers are at. I've seen a lot of big positions where some of you guys have had families, starting with CalFresh, cash assistance. We're not perfect. We're in this together as a community, and we want to thrive. I'm asking for your support. For this reason, we respectfully demand improved wages, enhanced health benefits, safer working conditions, and increased support. We urge our county leadership and board of supervisors to negotiate and deliver a fair contract that addresses staff burnout and attracts experienced professional commitment to public services. We continue to hire people from other counties, and they just leave within two years. I know that's more of an economy impact for us. Instead of losing people, why not help us since we're here already? And we have invested in this county because we care for our community. Only through these measures can our Stanislaus community truly flourish and maintain a safe and supportive environment for all. We are out in the roads. They don't tell us the best words, but we're going to help them. We get targeted. We're not law enforcements. We don't carry guns. We carry passion and a heart for our communities and our families. Thank you for your time, and I hope we get a better, good contract, please.
Thank you for being here. Next up is Bianca Lopez.
Okay, to start?
Oh, you're good.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I know that most of the crowd has left, but I shifted my comments to be in support of the folks that are sitting or were sitting in this room. I'm a home caregiver, and I know what it takes to care for others. And we already know that the most disadvantaged communities are often left behind. A good example was of your comments today as you came up here to nominate folks from the Latino community. Many of you mentioned that they did it all on their own and that if it wasn't for them, that their community would not be so resilient. And that's true for folks who are working like they are. You gave yourselves an 11% raise unjustifiably, I think. A lot of you have a job and make over $100,000 a year already. And then to point out, one of the speakers shared also a concern about communication. Only one response to that email. I mean, you get paid over $100,000 a year, and you can't respond to community members. This has been a concern of many of us for many, many years. Mr. Withrow, you're up for reelection. So is Mr. Gruehl. And I hope that the unions who are seeking to have equitable pay also remember that and can bring people to the polls. I really just wanted to invite folks. As you celebrated and proclaimed this as the Latino American Heritage Month, I want to also invite you all to the Latino Community Roundtable. It's not really a luncheon. I don't know what it's called because it's not during lunch, but we usually have them during lunchtime at the Red Event Center. But in the month of October, we are hosting the State of the Latino. And so we'll be going over some reports, a report and data that's produced by the Latino Community Roundtable to talk about some of our successes and some of our challenges to build political power and maybe take some of these seats if people are willing to step up or maybe the next seats in 2029. But so the State of the Latino is an invitation to all of you on October 23rd at 5:30. We're still looking for a location that's adequate and accessible for the community members. And now I'm going to wear another hat, the Valley Improvement Projects hat. I'm also a co-founder of Valley Improvement Projects, and I am inviting you to a couple of events. They're not really events, community spaces that we're building. On Wednesday, October 1st in Waterford, we are going to be hosting the Department of Pesticide Regulation and the County Ag Commissioner to talk about some enforcement issues and our community emissions reduction plan that shows or has some very concrete projects and proposals to reduce contamination or air contaminants in our air, but also mitigation that will help protect our communities. And then on October 2nd, we are working with the Department Environmental Resources with the Zero Waste Working Group, where we will be launching a first meeting to create a collaborative effort with the various jurisdictions in this county to advance a zero-waste goal. And we hope that you can also join us. And lastly, I know I have some time. I don't want to just kill time, but I also wanted to share that VIP continues to work on social environmental issues. We are a Latino organization, predominantly Latino. We serve predominantly Latino communities because they are the ones who live in these disadvantaged communities. And so one of the things that I've also noticed today is we can praise and we can give recognition as much as we want, but that's just lip service. So you acknowledge the hard efforts of people here today in the Latino community, but there is very many gaps that you have to meet. And one of those is equitable access to critical information. And we've asked for the board to implement an equitable translation and interpretation policy. And you all came up with Google Translate, which we already know, many of you probably have even tried the system yourselves. And I don't think you understand how inequitable your policy recommendations that you've made to your equity team to implement as policy. That policy is being used in your housing plan. It's being used in your general plan, and it is inadequate. I don't think you should wait for the federal government or the state to tell you that. Actually, don't wait for the federal government to do anything. But the state will come down on you for this because we're trying to get them to support these efforts. Google Translate does not justify for civil rights and access to information. We'd like a seat at the table so that we can discuss critical documents that should and must be translated so that folks can stay informed and actually be able to participate civically. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca.
Yes, I will.
I know the answer to this, but Christina Rodriguez? I'm sure if she didn't leave already, she's gone now. That's the last card I have. Any other? Any other person want to make a public comment about items not on the agenda? Okay, I see none. C.O. Hayes, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. And of course, I would have liked to have said words when the chamber had more folks in it this evening, but also recognize this is a school night, and I think a lot of people, it's difficult to stay late in a board meeting. So I do feel compelled to say a few words. First, I think it's important that, and to be honest with you, I'm hoping that some folks may watch this on a recording or something, but I'm going to speak to some of the folks that were here sharing their stories tonight. So I think they need to be thanked for coming out, particularly those who shared some very personal stories and perspectives for all of us to hear. I did start in a county department in my own career, and I've seen a lot of these challenges upfront and personal. I've got tremendous respect for the work that employees do. It's literally 24/7, 365. That's, that is very factual when it comes to what it takes to, to be a county employee in many of the positions. And I think beyond that, you know, my own family is, is like the average family out in the county. And I have a lot of family members here, and I think some of the people probably know that my own family has been helped tremendously by the hard work of the county staff, either folks who were here tonight or folks who are unable to make it here this evening. I can't say I've witnessed everything that county employees do, but I've witnessed a lot of it myself, very personally, and I have deep respect for it. So those folks need to be thanked. You know, I want to thank Carmen, Brent, Manny, Amanda, Chantique, Cece, Carlo, Jody, we share a name, Rosalva, Hortensia, and Bianca, thank you for recognizing our county workforce as well. Regarding negotiations, I'm going to do that thing that you're not supposed to do and share some of my thoughts about this negotiations process while we're still actually in the process. So most of you probably know I've been working around the formal labor negotiations process for, it's now over 25 years. And I can tell you that this process that we're required to follow through largely state law and case law, it's just not pleasant. It's not pleasant for either side. There are some unusual times where it's easier to get through it, but generally, it's an unpleasant process. If we could rewrite these rules for how you negotiate a labor contract, they would look completely different than what you see here. And I think that process sometimes pushes us and groups in the moments like this and that otherwise would be avoided if we had some other process available to. It's not designed to negotiate in public. Sometimes I think it'd actually be better for everybody involved if we could literally have that level of transparency, and you could see movement from either party live in action and just see what the parties are telling each other live in public. I heard comments this evening about wage offers to the county's workforce. I feel compelled to comment on that. I don't know what information's been communicated, how it gets communicated. I have deep respect for the Labor Negotiators for SEIU. I've worked with them personally for many, many years. They're very capable, and they represent their members well. What I also know is that we've granted wage increases, and the number's been mentioned multiple times, 11% over three years for the majority of the county's workforce. There are public records widely known to everyone that that's what's been negotiated for the majority of the county's workforce. We've actually reached agreement with 75, or reached agreement or set wage scales for about 75% of the county's workforce. All of our labor agreements were up over the last 12 months. This has been a very, very busy year of all of these conversations with labor groups. I also know that based on those levels that you're hearing about, that have been kind of widely commented on, we've programmed those same wage increases into our long-range financial models here at the county, and those would support any remaining groups that have yet to reach an agreement with the county. So I think it's important to say that if anyone has said that the county is unwilling to reach a final agreement within those same terms, that is just factually untrue. There is a lot of room to go in this negotiations process. And again, I just wish the process were different, but we are required to go through this back and forth with the various groups that we work with, and we respect that, we understand it. In this particular case, I, I know it was referred that there was, you know, a demand early on in this negotiation. Yes, all groups put demands on the tables. In this case, SEIU's demand, it was about 30% for three years. It's a $63 million hit to the county, including 27 additional economic proposals. I know for a fact that when you model those things, that leaves some of our county departments financially insolvent, okay? Do we really think that that was the demand that was going to stop negotiations? No, we do not. That was the starting point for us to keep talking and to work together to come to resolution, which we have done literally for every contract prior to this negotiation. I also expect we will get there in this negotiation. I think it's important to just, you know, recognize that the timing is important. We are out of contract, but we are not at impasse in these negotiations. I do expect that going forward, you're going to see some movement from both parties. I know one of the questions I had for my bargaining team was, what's taking so long for us to see more movement on either side? Why can't we move this back and forth forward together? I think the last bargaining was August 13th, and then when I asked, when was the bargaining team available to meet again? The answer was September 16th. I hope everybody can agree, we can't take over a month in between negotiation sessions if we're going to be successful here. I know our team has the directive to try to be as available as possible to keep this process moving forward. During that process, I'm going to encourage more transparency whenever possible, given the rules that we're required to bargain under. I think it's important for everybody to know where we're at and what we're hoping to accomplish going forward, so I'm going to encourage everyone to do that. I think county employees have a really tough enough job already, and that hearing rumors or misinformation about what's going to happen with their paychecks doesn't help anybody. So I'm sorry for the folks who aren't here that I can't personally thank, but hopefully they catch this. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. I think the county departments that are trying to support the process as well, everyone's working in very difficult circumstances, which you heard a lot about this evening. Lastly, I'm going to say, and I know my assistants really going to hate me for this, but when the process is done, if anybody who has the feeling that they would really like to talk to me personally about this process, just please reach out, and I'll provide whatever I can in my schedule to talk to anybody on an individual basis, but I need to do that after this process is completed. So thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you for your comments. All right. We're going to be moving on to the consent calendar. Before the board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the supervisors. Any supervisors like to pull anything on the consent calendar? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a first by Supervisor Manny Graywell.
Second.
I have a supervisor by, or I have a motion by, or second. Good lord. By Supervisor Withrow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving on. Public hearings. Public hearing to consider the adoption of the Stanislaw's Home Consortium and Stanislaw's Urban County Fiscal Year 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Federal United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Entitlement Programs Planning and Community Development. Anna San Nicholas, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, County Consuls.
Hold on, your, your mic's not working.
Hello?
There you go.
I was going to say, good morning, sorry. Delayed it. Good evening. Today before you, we have our Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for 24-25 fiscal year. So to give you a little bit of our background, the Stanislaw's Urban County members consists of seven of the nine cities, all of them except Turlock and Modesto, while our Stanislaw's Consortium consists of all the cities except the city of Modesto. Why is that? Because they receive their own HUD entitlement funding. So we've been together for about, since 2001. We were, we've been the lead since 2001. We had City Riverbank join us in 2020, and then again, we became the lead in 2023 for the home consortium. So one of our federal requirements is to file this Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, so our year-end progress report on our five-year plan. So this is our last and final installment of our 2020 adopted plan back in May of 2020. So again, this recaps our accomplishments for this last fiscal year. Now, a summary of the funding that we include in this end-of-the-year report is our annual allocation progress on CDBG, which we got about 2.3 million, emergency solutions grants about 200,000, and the remainder of our COVID, CDBG, COVID funding, about 3.9 million. And then our Home Investment Partnership Program funding, 1.2 million for a year for this last fiscal year. So the breakdown for our federal CDBG and ESG money is that we give an allotment to each of our partner cities for activities, and then we do allow them to have some admin, but if they need anything else, they can take it from their activity funding. We also set aside, we're limited to 15% for public services annually for CDBG. And ESG, we get an allotment, and we put it out with our public services for grants in the community. So altogether, we received about 2.5 million grouped. Now, CDBG is, the main purpose of it is to help moderate and below-income households. So the activities are limited to that, but they're also allowing us to work and prevent blight in neighborhoods and also meet a particular community development need, such as COVID was back in 2020. And so in addition to that, we were able to also receive, like I previously said, some COVID, CDBG funding back in 2020 and 2021. Now, the bulk of our funding is dedicated to projects. Sewer improvement for Stanislaw's County, and in the middle column, you'll see CDBG funds to date for the current project for each city and the county. So this is each of the cities except Turlock because they receive their own entitlement, and Modesto is on their own. So Series, I'm sorry, going back to county. So we have our West Modesto Sewer Improvements Project, and so far, we've invested approximately 3 million between Area 7, Area 9, and Area 21. So Area 7 being Spencer Marshall, the neighborhood, Area 9, Rouse, Colorado neighborhood, and Area 21, the Beverly Waverly neighborhood. So Phase 1 through 3 of Area 7 has been completed. Phase 3 is currently, has the bidding underway, and Area 9 as well. So we've managed to work with County Public Works to get approximately 5 million additional funds from the State Water Board, and about 20 million for Area 9, which I believe has been taken to the board, and we've been awarded by the State Water Board. Now, it's just a process of getting the funding and putting it out to work for us. So construction hopefully will be reported in the next upcoming CAEPER for the next fiscal year, so more to come on that. And then City of Series has a three-phase to project for Morale Village neighborhood. Now, each of the cities don't have sewer, but they do have ADA improvements, infrastructure that's dedicated to the health and safety of the neighborhoods. So Series had work out in the Morale Village neighborhood, City of Houston, Telly Road, Walker Lane area, Newman, Stephenson, Sunshine area infrastructure. Oakdale has started construction in their Southwest Downtown Safe Routes to School project. Patterson with the Washburn infrastructure improvements in that neighborhood, and Riverbank with Pioneer Park, expected to be completed in fall of 2025. And Waterford completed their NEPA and has bidding underway, expected in 2025 in the fall, for their G Street pedestrian. Now, each of these cities have multi-phase, multi-year projects, so again, one-year funding isn't going to be enough, usually takes three to four years. Now, the Stanislaw's Urban County Public Services for this last fiscal year, we were able to award to eight public service programs, a maximum of 35,000. We had Center for Human Services, we had the WE Care Program for their shelter, we had CASA for a support program for kids in the foster care system going through the court system, the Modesto Red Shield Center for after-school programs for kids, and the Children's Crisis Center, three locations throughout the county, one in Oakdale, one in Turlock, and one in Series. So with that, we were able to serve about 1,900 unduplicated individuals for the last fiscal year. Again, this program's dedicated for serving clients 80% and below the area median income. Just to break it down to you, even though these funds were not dedicated specifically just for shelter, with the funding, we did reach out and help at least 1,038 homeless individuals. And then also about 144 were seniors, according to the HUD definition, over the age of 62. And then 92 were female head of households. While year-to-date, our COVID money is still working, and we've been able to assist about 235 individuals for, with the following list of programs. So we had two rounds of funding for this COVID prevention funding. Before you go, the programs that ended June 30th of 2025, so we had Cambridge Academies that received funding for an Enterprise Connection Program, Center for Human Services for Resource Center, Children's Crisis Center for rent assistance and support assistance for families, Family Promise with rent and utilities, utility assistance, and Salvation Army with a neighborhood program to help with emergency food. And then United Samaritans, emergency employee hazard pay to keep their lunch trucks running. Now, the second round, they have an additional year that will report the final numbers next year. Cambridge Academies had some money for Host House and Naomi's House, Center for Human Services for the Family Resource Center Program throughout the county. CHSS had a rental assistance program, Well Haven had their shelter program, and again, the Salvation Army Red Shield with an emergency food program. Now, the next program is the Emergency Solutions Program dedicated for shelter support for operations and to help people prevent homelessness and also get into stabilized housing. So the three public service grants were awarded to Center for Human Services for their youth low-barrier shelter, Haven for their domestic violence victims' shelter program, and Turning Point for rental assistance to get people back into housing. So we had approximately $205,000 to split, and we had about 558 unduplicated individuals served this last fiscal year. So again, breakdown, 36 seniors, 26 veterans, 157 individuals with disabilities were reported. Now, our additional program this year is our Home Investment Program, and it may not hit the fiscal year exactly, but I'm proud to say that we finally released a request for proposals for affordable rental housing, and we'll be able to report on that fully in our next CAEPER report, but that is one of our accomplishments. So that will be for the cities and the county, if there's any projects that can help develop, rehab, any affordable housing in the consortium area. So it's approximately 6 million, 6.2 million available. Funds may be used for a variety in general with the home program, for rehab of occupied housing, assistance for first-time home buyers, land acquisition and rehab, and also some tenant rental assistance. Now, before you, you have the goals for the last Now, before you, you have the goals for the last five years. So for this final year, we were able to, and if you look at the very left side of the column, those are our goals for the CON Plan. So the Community Emergency Response is really talking to the COVID prevention funding. So we weren't able to meet all our goals, but some we really passed. When this plan was adopted, it was 2020 and we had just begun to see COVID. So when we were in development and got it approved, we weren't foreseeing COVID. And so when we put out the rapid rehousing and homeless prevention goals, again, it was a time where we, it was an unknown. There were several other state funding that came out to help with rental assistance that kind of put our money in the back and we weren't able to utilize it. HUD didn't allow us to change our goals, that'd be unfair, but we were able to change according to the community priority and needs. So we were able to shift the usage of our funding. So you'll see that the homeless overnight shelter goal and other is higher. And that really called for support for our shelters. That became a priority, as well as utility assistance for, and emergency food assistance for the community. So that's why you see a very high rate, 183% over a five-year period for shelter support and 143 for other. Again, that was support to stabilize households. And then the other goals that we had was improve public infrastructure. And again, the bulk of our funding is for infrastructure, but over the last five years, we've had a lot of labor and material costs rising. Not that that's an excuse, but it is multi-year, multi-phase projects. So we weren't able to accomplish as much as we thought back in 2020 we could. So we're at about 15% for infrastructure for the last, well, for the five years. And then for public services, we did, again, shift and we were able to hit 177 for the five-year goal. And housing, we hit 95%. Over the five-year period, we set out to do 60 units and we accomplished 57. And that was through a combination of NSP funding back in 2020 and 2021. And then work to end prevent homelessness, we hit our goal for the five years at 102%. So during our public review period for the CAPR, which started August 8th, we released it. And we are coming today before you for the public hearing. We were able to release it over our email listservs, posted on our website, including our urban county members' websites. And all the cities have taken it to their city councils and had community meetings as well as the county. We've also met at the Turlock Community Collaborative. We did a presentation and for the Continuum of Care monthly meeting. Now, staff recommendations before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing, approve the 2425 CAPR, and authorizations to submit to HUD with any comments that we receive incorporated in it and make any technical alterations if and as directed by HUD. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. On two slides backwards, we have the outcomes. We did really well in work to end, work to end and prevent homelessness versus homeless prevention, which was our second worst category. So what's the difference between work to end and prevent homeless houses?
The homeless prevention at the very top, under the Community Emergency Response, was to help pay for arrears. So if people were about to be evicted from their rental unit, there really was hardly any need for our money. I mean, there was a need, but back in 2020, 2021, for a good portion of the last five years, there was a moratorium and then a lot of landlords, it was really prohibited to evict. And so, yeah, and then there was also some state programs that were also available that made, they were, they became priorities. So our funding really went to the back burner. And in order not to lose the money, HUD allowed us to shift it as community needed.
Got it. Thank you.
Chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation tonight, I really appreciate it. I just had a couple of general questions about how the projects, primarily the new construction builds are selected and how, what is that process and how do you initiate those type of projects?
I'm sorry, are you talking about like our CDBG infrastructure projects and?
So like, let's just say, for instance, there's a parcel in Patterson, which I know me and you have discussed prior. Does the city have to initiate with HUD or with the county first in order to get that project up and running, in order to get the consortium funds?
It does help because we have to do like a pre-development meeting, only because we do need to have a bona fide selection process, so we can't just pick and choose. And then we also have to take it to the city council and the board supervisors for final approval. But before that, there is a pre-development process, like an environmental review, feasibility study. But the first part would be to initially start conversation with county staff so we could screen it and vet it through a, again, bona fide selection process, whether it be a request for proposals, a notice of funding availability, or yeah, some selection process that HUD approves.
Okay. Well, be prepared for the City of Patterson be reaching out regarding that parcel. I know that's something we've had our eye on for some time now on Los Plamas there. And then let's just say hypothetically, it's not a city. It's the county within the county guise, South Modesto, for instance. There's a lot of prospect out there for infill housing, affordable equitable housing projects. How could we, just within our own autonomy, start initiating these types of funds being dedicated to building more homes?
With the home program, it is a little bit trickier, but again, it starts with a conversation, like a pre-development meeting, as well as looking at the feasibility. But the main part where HUD holds those two is to have a selection process. That's about it.
Yes, okay.
And then again, taking it to, if it's within the city, within their jurisdiction, and then the board of supervisors for overall approval.
Okay. So just again, hypothetically, if I were to point out parcels in my district, would we have the opportunity to be proactive in trying to pursue those or at least consider those to get them through the options so that we go through all the hoops and hurdles that are necessary?
There's always opportunity because we're already starting our annual action plan for '26, '27. So that's starting, I think, next month or as soon as you guys click the gavel, we start the planning process. So those are conversations we can start and see what funding is available.
Sure.
The priorities and again, yeah, seeing where we go with what comes ahead with HUD. I know it sounds like it's in limbo, but.
Sure, I understand. No, I understand the outside limitations. I'm well aware of that. And if possible, I would love to sit down with you in the coming weeks. I would like to possibly identify some attractive sites within my district that are ripe for affordable housing. And you know, that's a high priority of mine. I think there's a lot of lots out there that are ripe for infill projects and just to try to make things more affordable for our families in Stan Sloss County. So I look forward to meeting with you. Angela, yes?
Yeah, I would just put, as Anna said, we just released the request for proposals for affordable rental housing development. So if there are nonprofit developers out there that may have some interest in those properties, now would be a good time for them to start talking to the county.
Absolutely. I want to get on your radar. So let's try to meet sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Terry.
Yeah, just really quick, Anna, thank you. Great, great report. So this goes back, I probably brought this up before, it was back to Spencer Marshall and maybe even Beverly Waverly, but really Spencer Marshall. You know, it's been five, probably, I'm thinking five years since I was, went out there and walked the neighborhood with everybody. And I know, it sounds like the State Water Resource Control Board is waiting for assurances, but we got those assurances like five years ago. We got commitments from, I think we had to have 70% of the, so how, we've probably talked about this before, but refresh my memory while we're, still haven't got this.
They wanted a bit more assurance. And so Anna and the Public Works team have been doing a lot of work the last couple of years with property owners to get the further assurance in the documented format that the state wanted. So it was kind of like when those original surveys happened and the neighborhoods were walked, that kind of was, okay, the state said, okay, we think you can get there, but now we want this. So we had to go through another layer. So there's been a lot of lessons learned working with the state on this, but we have gotten to a point where we now do have the funding. It's just getting everything signed, sealed, and done. I believe the bids for both projects are?
They're both in process right now and we're reviewing, so yeah.
So we're hoping by the next time we're reporting the CAPR, that at least Spencer Marshall will be done and hopefully those.
So in the next, within the next 12 months, we expect Spencer Marshall, everybody will be hooked up to sewer, is the thought.
The sewer will be constructed. Whether or not everybody will be hooked up is yet to be determined.
But we have funding for the hookups, so, yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Terry. Any others, any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I haven't seen any written comments. I don't believe we have any. Go ahead, come on up, Bianca.
Thank you, Anna, for the presentation. I stayed so I could hear it thoroughly. I was at the Turlock Collaborative and I missed a lot of it. But I was wondering if, I also had a question about the priorities and how these projects are selected. You mentioned a priority criteria that we have to have one in order to proceed. What is that priority criteria?
Priorities for the five-year plan?
And for selecting projects?
Oh, for selecting projects, kind of two-part. The county is dedicated, the bulk of their CDBG funding for infrastructure and health and safety projects. So that through studies and through community surveys, that's always been one of the highest priorities that's come out. Even in our 2025 CON Plan, which was adopted in May, that came out as one of the highest needs. So that's where we've continued that as one of our top priorities for the next five years. And then also affordable housing, but in this case, we made it more attainable housing. So that covered us for rental and homeownership. And then also homelessness to help mitigate it. So that came out in our community survey, community meetings, and again, studies that we've had.
Would you say that your surveys are?
Bianca, if you could just go through your comments and ask all your questions in one.
Sure, and then we can do the answers.
So it's not a back and forth.
Sure, okay, fine. I'm wondering about the Enforcement Department and where the enforcement fits in HUD. We've had several people complaining about improper air filtration in HUD homes, some in Series. And when I call the county, I get the runaround of who's responsible because it depends on which kind of HUD housing it is, who's the actual owner of the facility. And so I don't know where enforcement fits, but people are breathing mold in their bathrooms and in their homes and with children with asthma. And so I think some funding needs to be allocated to make sure that people are not living in those conditions. I know that we're, you know, broke, but that doesn't mean that we deserve less protections. And then just wondering how this plan fits into the whole housing and general plans as well? If we have a selection criteria, but then what is the bigger picture and how this might fit into that? Since we're not doing great with our housing plans.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I can handle the Housing and General Plan. So when the consolidated plan is done, the five-year plan is done, all the projects that get selected through it do have to, you know, meet consistency. And it's not just for the county, it's for all the cities that participate. So when we're looking at affordable housing projects or any of the projects, we are looking to tie them back to make sure that everything is consistent with all the general plans. Again, not just for the county, but for all the cities, you know? And address the enforcement.
No, for enforcement for the projects, that is done through our monitoring, which we have to follow federal, and there is new guidelines for it. So any new projects will be held to that criteria, so.
But if we do have a situation in the community where there is housing that was developed with HUD funding and they are having air filtration issues and mold issues, that would go back to who is the entity that provided the funding, so whether or not it was the housing authority or if it went through a local nonprofit. We have not been in the housing development game, so we don't actually oversee any housing units and what those filtration systems would be.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Entertain any more comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, accept a report.
Supervisor Whitrow with it first and Supervisor Graywell with it second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to correspondence, we're going to acknowledge the receipt of correspondence referred, recommended on the agenda. Any board of supervisor reports.
Just a quick one. I did have the honor and privilege of celebrating the Mexican Independence Day celebration at El Ramatito in South Modesto, hosted by SMBU, South Modesto Businesses United. It was a great day. Thousands of people were in attendance. And again, El Ramatito is a jewel of Stan Sloss County, so we applaud them and thank the Marquez family and SMBU for hosting. As well as, I do want to highlight our newest pool within the county, the Bonita Pool. I know some of myself and Mr. Hayes, Mr. Bose, were at the celebration that occurred for the community of Crow's Landing. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony. It was great to see the kids jump into the pool and it's just going to be a lasting impression for that community moving forward. So it's great to have the pool back after a number of years. And I do want to thank Tara Chumley and I want to thank Andy Johnson. They were incredible throughout the process. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chance. Manny.
Thank you so much, Chair. Given some recent events, I felt it was very relevant to issue a statement. Our country has been hit with terrible past events. We strongly condemn the political violence and tragic acts that undermine the principles of free speech and open discourse. Such acts have no place in our society. As an elected official, we are elected to represent the people and sometimes we will have disagreements. And that is okay. We have conversations, take a vote to decide what to do, and those are our values that we should never compromise on. Whether it's an elected official or a political commentator, we must uphold the right of all individuals to express their views without fear, as this is the foundation of our free nation. My thoughts are with all of those affected by this political violence and we stand with our community in rejecting violence and promoting unity. So I'm praying for our community, our country, to come together in a time of healing. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. I appreciate those comments. Any others? All right. Legislative Fiscal Report.
Okay, thank you. That's difficult to follow. Thank you very much, Supervisor Graywell. I want to also thank Supervisor Chance Condit for his highlighting the Bonita Pool opening and for your specifically naming some of the individuals that were involved there. But he's not going to name himself, but I also tell you the same thing that I tried to share with the public that day. That project was very, very difficult for us to move forward for multiple reasons. And Supervisor Condit made sure that all of our barriers were removed, most importantly, the financing available to fill the gaps for. So I want to thank you very, very much for that.
Well, that disjogled my memory and looking at Jennifer, Senator Ana Caballero, she deserves immense amount of credit. She came through for us when we needed her the most. So again, Jennifer, if you still text the senator, let her know. We thought of her that day and we do celebrate her and thank her for her commitment to Crow's Landing.
Yeah, I know. And that actually dovetails right into my legislative report because the, our local legislative body was really busy over the, last weekend, actually, the legislative session unexpectedly went into Saturday. And I think everybody is aware that all bills have either been held over or are on the governor's desk at this point. So the process, the way it works is we are now looking at all of the bills on the governor's desk, comparing to our legislative platform, working with our own representatives to determine if we need to speak out on any of those individual bills. So we'll keep you informed of that as we go along. And then just very quickly, I think everybody is aware that we're coming down to the end of the federal fiscal year. There's still conversation going on about a federal shutdown. At this point, we have no reasons to be concerned that any specific impacts would occur here. At this point, we have no reasons to be concerned that any specific impacts would occur here in Stanislaus County to the service of our community, but it's hard to keep up with the back and forth, and I'm, like everybody else, we just kind of watch the news and see what it says, and see where we're at in the moment, so that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Jody. Deputy Krebs, Deputy Molina, thank you for your overwatch, appreciate you guys, and we're adjourned.